Our Guesthouse South Treatment Center addition and interior renovation special land use public hearing minutes, any discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Share a move, approve the minutes as submitted for the July 16th, 2025 Planning Commission meetings.
I have a motion to have support, or support by Mr. Lovett, further discussion by the Planning Commission. Seeing none, was that, sorry, Mr. Cummins, I strike the correction, I spoke to Mr. Lovett being a supporter, and it came from that end, generally speaking, so, sorry to not give the due credit where necessary, we'll proceed along with our agenda review and approval, any discussion, oh, sorry, don't have a, didn't have a form of motion on that, right? It's a motion out of support, do you have any public discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Sorry, getting ahead of myself this evening. Agenda review and approval, item number four, any discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
We approve the agenda as submitted.
By Mr. Gross, supported by, or Mr. Lovett this time for the truth. Further discussion by the Planning Commission, seeing none, any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Item number five is brief public comment on non-agenda items, is anyone looking to make brief public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will proceed with item number six, which is our consent agenda, any discussion with our consent agenda, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, do I have support? Support, support by Mr. Gross, further discussion by the Planning Commission, any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Alright, that leads us to our first new item of business this evening, which is PC 22-27, Willow Creek Apartment Site Plan Extension Request, if the applicant's present, you want to step up to the podium for us. The request is located at 3120 South Appear Road for parcel 0926151019. If you want to state your name and address for the record, please, and walk us through your question this evening.
Joseph Salomi, 2940 West Buell Road, Oakland Township, and I'm requesting an extension of the site plan approval for the 107 apartments at the Willow Springs.
Okay, any update on construction, or things proceeding in the process, kind of where are you guys at within everything?
We're gonna make an effort not to muddy the waters too much, but we're looking at some other options, and we've been in discussion with the community, and I think everyone knows that we were granted a liquor license, and so now we're looking at a mixed use here. And so as I go through those plans, I'm requesting that I keep this site plan, uh, alive.
Okay, understood, and what kind of timeframe are you looking for an extension request?
Twelve months.
Okay, anything else you want to add before I turn over to the Planning Commission? Okay, alright, so, Planning Commission, thoughts on an extension for the project? Obviously, we've seen that the market has a lot of moving parts and pieces, I don't think we've seen any major overhaul to ordinance sections since this project has been approved, so, generally speaking, you know, could not see it back, you know, and grant the extension, also the opportunity to decline and have the project come back, it sounds like, you know, there might be potential revisions, but at this point, not formally submitted, so, thoughts from the Planning Commission?
What's the status, are we gonna keep the putt-putt and the driving range open?
That's our intention, is we're trying to come up with a plan that will allow us to have the dual use, and keep the driving range, miniature golf courses, add one that's year-round, you know, enclosed, more modern type, as well as a multifamily component on the site.
We'll go over to seeing some revision.
Yeah, I think, it sounds like, generally speaking, it wouldn't hurt to grant the extension and potentially see an amendment here in the future to the site plan and proceed from there, thoughts on similar motion?
I would move that the Planning Commission approves the site plan extension request for PC 22-27, Willow Creek Apartment Site Plan for one year, from the most recent site plan approval extension date of July 20th, from the most recent approval extension.
Alright, I have a motion to have support. Support by Mr. Walker over on my left, further discussion from the Planning Commission. So, just to be clear, one-year extension being granted, and obviously, it sounds like we may or may not see a potential revision to the site plan back at us, so, you're, we'll proceed with motion on the table, any public discussion on the motion, including the public? Roll call vote, please.
Gross?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Lovett?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Okay, item 8A is Eastport Village Plan Unit Development PUD Concept and Eligibility Plan, if that team wants to make their way up to the podium, I'll further introduce. So, we have seen this unfinished business in the recent past, this is PC 25-27, like I said, PUD Concept and Eligibility Plan located at 571 South Appear Road, parcel 0911-427, 004, 006, 007, and 545 South Broadway Street, parcel 0911-427161, or 016, excuse me, and 017. If the applicant's present, you'd like to state your name and address for the record, and you have a floor.
Dominic Moschieri, 3005 University Drive, Auburn Hills, Michigan.
Thank you.
Good evening, here to reacquaint ourselves with Eastport Village, proposed PUD in the qualification stage. First and foremost, the proposed community is in both the village and the township, so the village of Lake Orion and the charter township of Orion. It's a transition use into, we get to the greater densities and smaller lot sizes in the village. First and foremost, that in the village, I know we're not, we're here for the township, but just in the village, which is the northern section, and we have the demarcation line, that is currently zoned MU, and MU does not allow single-family dwellings, so we're actually downzoning. Right now, the permitted use without any special land use hearings for the village would be 18 dwellings in three stories. Our proposal is only for seven dwellings in that area, and less than 25 feet in height. A significant buffer in trees that we're going to be adding on the north property line, and that then blends into the neighborhood to the north. And to the south, in the township, the property, one-third of the property is zoned commercial business, general business. The master plan, two-thirds of the property is zoned general office, and general office. Under the current zoning, 50,000 square feet of general commercial space could be built, and under the master plan, over 100,000 square feet of office can be built, and we do have those test plans available to discuss if you wish later. So, we are taking this as a downzoning, we are making it less intense. Our traffic, based on the current zoning, based on the current zoning use and the land uses that are permitted, our traffic, daily traffic is four times less, yes, four times less, and that's very important to acknowledge. So, this is a downzone, it's a blend, my, Chris Bronzetti will get into the public benefits, because of PUD section, you must describe the public benefits, and we listened to the community, we listened to the Planning Commission members, we made changes to the plan, and we increased the public benefit section to our proposed PUD. But again, I wanted to stress to the Planning Commission and to the public, this is a less intensive plan, far less, four times less traffic, four times less traffic, I can't say that enough, and it is a transition to the village, which is 50 lot zoning, 50-foot size lot zoning is typical. One thing that did come up, and we have the photographs of the current communities to the south and to the west, in the township of Orion, and that is, 10 feet apart and single-family is done in many places, and just down the street, in the Woods of Orion, that is an example, and then in, the one at Stadium Drive, just south, Orion Woods is one, yes, anyways, and then directly north, in the village, those homes are about the same size and the same distance apart from where our proposal is. Along the perimeter on the south side, we have extensive landscaping that is planned. Our preservation of the trees, we'll do it, we'll do it at the greatest extent and preserve the healthy native trees, and remove the invasive vegetation, and supplant that with three times as many trees along the perimeter. Chris Bronzetti will discuss the public benefit section, which is a critical part to the PUD acceptance, and at this stage of what we're requesting this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Hello there, Chris Bronzetti, Moschieri Companies. All of you, I believe, have a booklet that we had distributed, there's a couple loose sheets, as you open, where we talk about the PUD qualification, which Dominic had touched on basically all of those points for PUD qualification. The next aspect of this is public benefits, which, we've been over this before in the previous meeting, we've made changes to the plan that also emboldens the public benefit aspect to it. If I can go through those, I'll hit existing ones, as well as highlight what has been changed. Number one, we have an additional connection that we're making from the Paint Creek Trail, to hopefully one day connecting to the Pollyanna Trail, as you see by, yeah, Dominic is, you can see it to the south of the detention area, and connects through the development, and then also, one thing that we've changed from the previous submittal is, we've highlighted the fact that we're improving signalization at O'Dana, and highlighting the crosswalk striping that will go in effect. The, as we had mentioned before, this development has a number of different types of housing, encouraging multi-generational living, which is something that is important to us, and is also important to the township. The existing property is underused, and frankly, somewhat in a condition of blight. Obviously, we're looking at improving this area from the west end, to the, all the way over to the Paint Creek Trail. The major item, and Dominic stressed it before, is the fact that we are going with downzoning, downzoning the intensity of this property, so, the result will be less of an impact on the neighboring areas, less traffic, less use overall, from what could have been proposed based on the zoning and the master plan. We've also added, our major change to the plan is in the southwest area, originally we had the street connected to Glenworth through the subdivision to the south. If you look in the southwest corner now, you'll see that our street is stubbed off, and we've added a, two public pickleball courts, and also a little playscape area. We've also added four parking spaces that would be accessed from Glenworth, this would be open to the public, but maintained by the subdivision association, this is not something that will become a burden on the township for maintenance. In fact, if I may, this was something that Mr. Enos brought up in his review, the entire development will be controlled by subdivision associations, one for the commercial aspect, one for the multifamily homes, and for the single-family homes. So, an important aspect of a PUD is that there is a central control, and we will have that in this development. In fact, something else that he had mentioned was about how the beautification easement that we have around the perimeter, which is integral to our buffering at the north and the south ends of the development, we have an intense evergreen plantings that we're going to be doing. That is something that will be controlled by the association, homeowners will not have the ability to go in and do what they want in that area, that's why we're making it how it is, because we want to be good neighbors, ultimately, to the developments to the north and south. Something else that we're doing is, we are, excuse me, we are providing a development or a research fund to the John Winters subdivision. You may not recall, but when we were here the first time, there was a torrential rainstorm, and there were concerns brought up during the meeting about the condition of the streets and of drainage to the south of us. Well, in fact, Jack went there, and our engineer Steve Pangore went by and actually took pictures that night, because it was a, I don't know, probably a one-inch storm within the hour. We took pictures, and we said, hey, you know what, it, you know, it just makes sense to us, so, we are going to provide a $55,000 fund towards research testing, however we can decide, they're obviously not our roads, they're the county's roads, but we are offering something to get them started to some type of a remedy, or to at least mitigate the issues that they're experiencing to the south of us, in John Winters subdivision. Another, one other item is across the street at the Orion Veterans Memorial, we are choosing to make an endowment fund to recognize those who've served our nation, that would also be in the same amount as the John Winters subdivision development at the $55,000. That is the, that's the highlights on the public benefits, if you'd like me to go over the changes more specifically, I'm more than happy to, if you have questions, you know, I kind of turn it back over to you to see where you would like to.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I think, bigger picture, you've highlighted some of the big-picture changes, if there's anything else kind of high-level you want to go through, but if not, I'll turn it over to our consultants for their reviews of the revision.
Okay, oh, one other item that Dominic just mentioned, I think when, it was either Landis or Enos, they had mentioned about their agreement, or with the development, they put a caveat about fire safety, so, the fire reviewer did come in, I think he may have come in maybe a day later from your report, but nonetheless, just to stress, we are going to be fire suppressing all of, all of the residences, and of course, the commercial buildings, so, all of these single-family homes will be fire suppressed individually. Multi, in the front, the townhomes, there's different ways of going about it, we're going to go ahead and do that anyway, but according to the fire marshal, he accepted the lengths of the dead ends in that that we had.
Thank you for that, and it's typical for, obviously, our consultants to cross-pollinate comments or issues prior to their formal issuance of, they put it out there and are flagging each other for, obviously, co-review, so. Well, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to our planner for their review of the submittal, and then we'll circle it back for some discussion, questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening Commissioners, and thank you to the applicant for, I feel like, really hearing us at the last meeting, hearing the comments in regards to this process, which is, right now, at the Planning Commission level, we had a board, the board was here last time, they'll be, if the Planning Commission's comfortable, we'll move this up to the board for more of a final conceptual review, but, again, thank you for hearing us, I feel like this project's come a long way since the last time we saw it, especially in regards to the, and I don't want to be redundant, because I said it a dozen times, but showing us what those recognizable benefits were, in a way that not only were provided in a narrative, but also provided on the plan itself, and so, and you just indicated all of those, I was especially pleased that you didn't have that access to Glenworth, you removed that, and added some open space and some active recreation, which not only can be used by the residents of this project, but also the township itself. So, I won't go through all the recognizable benefits, but I do feel that you have met that section of the ordinance, we also allow for exemplary projects, some density credits, there's five factors that you have to meet to get a density credit, which you're asking for, we feel you did meet those, at least two of those requirements to be, to be given a density credit. The one thing the Planning Commission, I believe, is going to talk about, and I want to talk about, is you're asking for several different waivers, and those waivers are really, for the most part, setbacks, parking, road widths. I feel like those are reasonable requests, they fit in the overall project with those setbacks, as opposed to what was required in the underlying zoning there are three, and what you're proposing now, as long as we're, if we're reducing those setbacks, we're really going to want to have some good tight screening and buffering in the form of fencing and/or landscaping. But overall, I'm comfortable with the recommendation to move this to the board, but I do have five or six comments that do need to be addressed, the clarification, you did say that the beautification easement would be addressed and handled by the HOA, that's a, that's great. We wouldn't recommend you preserve as many trees as possible, that's pretty difficult with this site, but I'm going to keep asking for that, just because it is, it is pretty well-wooded.
If I don't mind interrupting, if you don't mind interrupting, one item that I, it is in our, in our book, but you may not have noticed it, but in your note about trying to save trees, we've actually moved our utilities, our storm sewer, actually closer to the middle area of the rear yards in the single-family, so that we're not digging, you know, 20-foot wide swastika storm sewers, it's pushed to the very back of the, very back of the lot. So, we made that change in our engineering to get that a little more forward, so that way, we can, we have a better shot at.
At preserving those trees along that property line.
Exactly.
Good, great, great. Concept elevations of buildings is noted, they're a little confusing, but for the, for the housing and the commercial use, that could be a little bit more clear, and that could be done at final, fire department review of the dead ends, I've got a, as you said, I wanted to look at what our fire marshal said, but, but overall, I feel, we feel you met the recognizable benefits, the eligibility criteria for density credits, and you addressed a lot of the concerns that we had, even, even minor concerns in regards to the, for example, the parallel parking on the entrance, removing that, and it's clear to me, and I know, and Mark may talk to it, but what could be developed there under the general business, commercial and R3, would, could generate a significant more amount of traffic on this site.
Alright, thank you for your overview, John, we'll circle back if we have some comments or further discussion points as we dig into the plans, this time we'll turn over to our engineer for their review of the project's submittal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights of our second review letter, as you may be aware, the intergovernmental agreement defers the water in the sanitary sewer to the village, all the, all the residents will be customers of the village, and not the township. We did take a look at the density plan, everything looked feasible from an engineering standpoint, so, no, no issues with the density plan. Stormwater is preliminary at this stage, but, but appears to be maintaining existing drainage patterns with the creation of a detention basin in the northeast, we will need to see some means of stormwater infiltration at the final PUD. Soil survey seems to indicate pretty, pretty, pretty good soils, suitable for infiltration on the majority of the site, so, I think there's opportunity to do that within these proposed beautification and open space easements, we can get through that detail, you know, at final. As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to eliminate the two northern approaches that exist on the site right now on the 24th, and keep the southern approach, make improvements as recommended in the traffic study, and that, that approach opposite O'Dana will be improved with turn lanes and a fourth leg for signalization for the proposed development. Overall, you know, we are in agreement with the findings of the study, we did find a few technical errors that should be corrected and resubmitted, as, just to have a correct study on file, because these, these studies do get handed off to other developments and looked at in the future, so we want to make sure we have an accurate study on file. There was a wetland delineation report provided with the resummital, there were three small wetlands identified on the site, nothing of significant concern, but there will be a requirement for the applicant to apply for a wetland permit at the final PUD. But, similar to, you know, the planner's findings, all of our previous concerns were addressed, we feel that the concept PUD is in substantial compliance with your ordinances and engineering standards, we just had the two, two items that we wanted to see included in any kind of approval, that would be the traffic study be revised and resubmitted to address the minor comments we noted, and that, second, that they go through engineering plan following concept and final PUD.
Just Landis, thank you very much for your overview of the project, as mentioned earlier, we did have a fire marshal's review, who was recommending approval with recommendations, handful of just parameters, for example, the 8,400 square foot retail facility shall not be greater than 30 feet in height, and then some fire hydrant location shifts based on kind of the conceptual site plan for requirements of the fire code. There was a public services review, as typically completed with our applications, WRC, same thing, we'll note, we did receive a couple of citizen letters for our record after the public hearing portion of this project, but they, in our, they are in our packet this evening, and also admitted as record. I will just provide a little overview for anyone here in just understanding of the PUD process. PUD, as mentioned at our initial meeting, is a multi-step process that involves both ourselves as the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees, it is multi-step at both iterations, so, here we are purely a recommending body, I can't speak this evening, lucky me, to the Board of Trustees, one way or the other, and then there's the opportunity for the applicant to come back with site plan, so, what we are looking at here right now, strictly in our agenda, is the PUD concept, and so, the idea of the project, and also the eligibility for it to be a PUD itself, so, we will see, if this project were to proceed in the, in the future, we would always see the site plan back again for fine-tuning of the details and various components, so, just so everyone's familiar, especially those maybe listening at home or here in the public, understanding how this kind of works, it's not a one-and-done phase, and if you want to stay involved one way or the other, it's a multi-step one. So, with that said, I'm going to turn over to the Planning Commission for their initial thoughts, questions for the applicant, questions for our consultants, who wants to kick us off? Mr. Gross?
Sure.
Floor's yours.
We're really dealing with two elements this evening, one is eligibility as a PUD, and the second thing would be the concept plan as initially submitted. I'll address the first one, first from my standpoint, as an eligibility, the property is presently zoned business and residential, it's master planned for office, I think it's situated such that with the multi-use potential of the site as currently zoned, that the PUD is really a, an ideal consideration for this property in terms of its potential development, so, I think the applicant has done a pretty good job of identifying. So I think the applicant has done a pretty good job of identifying some public benefit and the fact that a planned unit development would be far better off than a series of unrelated developments.
I, I agree. I, I think PUD, especially with the clarifications brought forth with us this evening, the applicant has worked to clarify some of our initial questions of why a PUD and, and how are they going about a PUD, not just, you know, in the sense of kind of, as we see from time to time, putting in what they want, but rather a mix of, of what we would like to see also. You know, I think it's a difficult site. I've sat on the Village Planning Commission in the past, also the Township Planning Commission. I am a village property owner. I used to live in the village. I live in the township. I've kind of played on both sides of this fence. And for many years, we've been aware that the Jacobson site could be some sort of development. And I think it's, kind of takes this creative tool to, to make that work, especially since there's two kind of governments here working in conjunction or planning ordinances in conjunction. So, you know, I'll kind of allude to your next topic, Mr. Gross, but I think, you know, the general overview of what the project is, is, is what we would like to see or what I've always kind of seen on this, something that addresses the M24 corridor residential that can kind of transition to adjacent uses, whether they be to the north in the village or to the south in, in the township. You know, by no means am I surprised that obviously these kind of smaller lots or tighter footprints are proposed here. I think just the general gist that we don't have stacks on stacks of multi-floor, multi-use or, or multi-tenant residencies are, are benefit. You know, we're seeing kind of this detached condo concept. They're a little tighter together. There's been some success in the township with that. So I think the general idea of it, I'm in favor. I think there's some, some details we, we should discuss this evening as we allude towards, you know, conditions and, and components that we think we want to see a little further refined. But I think the revisions we're seeing here and the ideas that are present, I'm, I'm in favor of. So further discussion points from Planning Commission. Go ahead.
I also agree that I think the proper way to develop is with the PUD. But I also see some things in the plan that, that could lead to some problems. The drive that comes in off of M24. You have a multifamily, seven-unit building. I see nine parking spaces on the street. Wondering how those spaces, the only way in and out, they're parallel parking. Are they going to actually be a problem, create a safety hazard for the 55 units that are going to be on this property? Developer might want to look at that to make sure that it's safe, that we can deal with the parking adequately in here. And the other thing that I'd like to get resolved is on the signalization. Developer pays for that signalization.
Yep, understood. So signalization, essentially covering the cost or the improvement, right? Versus just identifying the need, correct? Further discussion points, I'm making some notes. We can kind of circle back to some of these topics and. Go ahead, Mr. Lovett.
So there was a building on the west side. How many units was that building on the west side of, or east side, east side of the Midas there? Where the pickleball courts are now?
The building that was deleted was a four-residence unit.
Four residents, okay. And then I think it's important to note in this packet that you submitted to us tonight, the self-imposed restrictions on the business area. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, in fact, thanks for mentioning that. The proposed building that we have here, as you know, based on hearing the dimensions and the sizes of what would have been allowable here, is 10 times the size of what we are proposing now. We're proposing a one-story, 8,600-square-foot building with a couple covered awnings to it that put it at a gross size of approximately 11,000 square feet. That is just a fraction of what could have been used if you were to reference our, our test plan for the, for the master plan area. So we kept it, we kept it small. I don't want to say small, but it, it is small. We wanted it to be, to have harmony with what was going on in the rest of the Lapier Road frontage. In fact, if you, if you look at the entire development, we're, we're basically doing our best to try and mirror what is existing north and south of us. And within the parameters that we have, we're meeting the parameters. For example, the five, five units per acre is an item in, in the zoning. We're, we're meeting that. The restrictions on setbacks and side to side with the master plan that really, with a PUD, I should say, that, that all becomes subjective. But what isn't subjective was the five-acre-per-unit mandate. And if you look at our sheet that we have, the data that we have, it supports our, we are currently at a 4.71 per acre density. The other, obviously with the signalization that we have, people will be able to make a direct left turn with the traffic light. That, we feel, is probably one of the best benefits for traffic flow coming in and out of the development. Obviously, we shut off the connector to Glenworth, deleted a building and added some recreational to it. To your point, Mr. Cummings, that multifamily building on the south side of the entrance, that bill, it's not identified very well, but on the south side of that building, where you drive around to the back, all of those residents have an enclosed two-car garage and then there is additional parking of two space, two spaces on their driveways before they get into the street. That, I think, helps with the, the idea of the parking for just the frontage there.
Sorry, can you touch base on the proposed uses for the, the building itself, the commercial building? Do we have that yet or what the restrictions would be? We spoke to that in the past, I believe, the first.
Yeah. We have it on the screen here. It's in your booklet. I, I know the booklet's kind of long. Self-imposed restrictions that we have. The list that we have here are items that could have gone there. Tattoo parlors, dollar stores, nail salons, drive-through restaurants, gas stations, tobacco stores, car wash, motel dispensary, user new car lot. Those are all items that we are choosing to restrict from the area. We want the building to serve not only the immediate people by foot. We talked about the 15-minute neighborhood concept. And with residential behind it, it's a, you've got built-in 45, five actual residents to the building that we have there in the front. We're looking for a niche boutique grocery-type concept, bakery, something to that effect, with a coffee shop, maybe a floral area, something in that other genre.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Gross, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned some of that because you're eliminating kind of some staples of the community with, you know, Jacobsons and, and the florists.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if some of that could be retained in some form or another for the community benefit.
Effort, efforts are being made to have similar types of uses to what you just said.
I agree with Mr. Cummings that, you know, buildings 49 through 55 are not showing any parking at all for that. And I don't think we could include the parallel parking on the entrance, which I think should be removed anyways because it's the only entrance and access to the development. And to have parallel parking on, on that, I think is going to be a dangerous situation. And those eight or 10 spaces, I think, could be a real problem in terms of getting into and out of the, the development. You referenced that this is going to be a multi-generational development. And with that in mind, there's a potential of children being in, in the development. And with that in mind, it means the school bus is going to be going through this development. I think a consideration of a potential shelter or something for pickup for children or as a shelter for the pickleball courts, I think, could be advantageous to, to eliminate a lot of confusion in terms of how the school bus might access the site or through the site and a way to control the, control that access. Those are the major concerns that I have expressed so far. Other than the trash collection for units 13, 14, and 15.
Just speaking to in the sense of turnaround radius of the dead-end road, is that where you're getting at? Um, there's a point.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just, so I don't lose track of Mr. Gross's important comments. Let's start with the ones I remember. The lattice, that school. We'll work with the school district and the bus stop and we'd appropriately have a potential benches and a, a shelter. If it's deep in the site, we do have this spot of open space. You can go back to this. We could do so in the unit 36. We have the potential to do it there. If, if the bus is in, in the interior, at the entryway, we could make certain that there's not a conflict. Luckily, all the traffic stops for buses, so that makes it imperative to say.
One thing I want to, and I understand your constructive criticism, and I take the constructive way, no offense to it. Where we have these seven residents live-work building on the south side of the entryway, those are important guest parking spaces. They're, they're parallel spaces. And if you could bring in the elevation, please, of that building. We have four parking spaces per residence for the building, two in the garage and two directly behind the garage. And those guest spaces are imperative to the success of a small boutique live-work operation. We have, you know, parallel parking on M24 in Oxford, in the city of Ox, in the village of Oxford. You have parallel parking in the city of Rochester on, on M150. And the, the amount of traffic it's generated is a, a concern. The traffic signalization, the speed which it comes into. And that's why we've eliminated the two parking spaces, one earlier in the game and then the second one we eliminated with the comments of the engineer, of the township consultant, that we've, we've done that, mitigated that already. So the idea of having a town-village feel in the whole TND traditional neighborhood design is to have that type of parking. It also slows traffic too. As much as there could be a conflict, recognize the conflict and the safety, it also kind of slows traffic. We have a left turn lane for seven cars of parking in there. So we made that a significantly wide entry road and have shown demonstratively in the island, if you could, please. We show the car stacking as it would be proposed. One, two, three, is it seven or s? Seven, yep. So seven cars stacking there. So we've taken a lot of detailed concern and experience of doing live-work communities as we have in the city of Birmingham, in a street that's far busier with parallel parking and a building almost verbatim in size called Iron Gate in Birmingham. But we do recognize that we could take a pause, we come back for the site plan. This is a concept plan. And if there's some alternative potential for the, for that parallel parking, we'll look at that by maybe shifting it further in to closure to the building. I just want to eliminate the green space. But there's some other opportunities that we'll look at and explore. And we recognize and we will make that a priority to mitigate that further when we come back. If it still resonates as a, as a conflict, we could eliminate them, but I think it, it impunes on the ability of success for the live-work building and the success of those small business owners that may want to live-work and reside and have a place for their guests to park. But we, we will look at that seriously. And Mr. Gross, not to excuse you, those are, what other point, I don't want to miss, there was a third point you had made. You had the traffic coming in, school bus, and what was the third one, sir? Oh, garbage, thank you. Okay. The, we have two residences there and it's the rollaway and that's just part of the private garbage collection. This will be a, be through a private collection contract. And it won't be that difficult for the truck to back in. And that's less than 75 feet. So if you look at the, the lot width is approximately 50 and you have a lot and one half, one full lot and half of one lot where the driver will be. So it's 75 feet. It's less the distance of a tractor-trailer. And probably it's three-quarters of the distance of the actual length of a garbage vehicle. So we could look at, pardon me? Yeah. So the, the fire, the fire chief was satisfied with, with that, but we do recognize your concerns and so we could help mitigate that also. Good, good points. We don't want any difficulty or conflicts with that either. And the backing up and the beeping of a garbage truck in the morning.
And Mr. Marshairway, you have the floor. Clarification on the traffic light improvements off-site. Is that a cost that's part of the development or outside of this or?
It's, it's our cost. It's a significant cost in excess of $300,000, the re-signalization of M24, Odana, in our entryway.
Thank you for that clarification.
Across crosswalk, actually improved crosswalk signalization also, which is very imperative for the pedestrian. And especially with the connection of the Paint Creek Trail. And then our improvements on Heights Road with the boardwalk going over Lake Orion and with, when I say the catalyst, not, not the pure connection to Pollyanna, but the, the catalyst to get Polly and, and the Paint Creek Connector.
All right, thank you. And, and thank you for clarifying the parallel parking. Your, your, your benefit, east port changes list does indicate that the parallel spaces would be removed. So there might be, maybe I'm confused on that. But the question I had was, and maybe I didn't see that in the review, is the, if you could explain a little bit more of the live-work units. My experience is the office or store is on the bottom floor while the resident lives above. Is, and is that going to be the requirement?
Correct. There, there cannot be sub-tenancy. So only, the only operations for a, a small life insurance office, a architect, sometimes a therapy, or it could be a very small one-chair salon. That must be the same resident that resides in that full unit. We're going to be selling those as condominiums. So they'll be owned, just as we, we have done in the past in the city of Auburn Hills. We did live-work, but it's all self-contained, so those, those would be for sale.
Thank you for that, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, you indicated the traffic light. You're talking about the traffic coming east on Odana to 24, that light?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And what are the plans for that?
That'll be signaledized because that lines up with our entry road. And it'll allow, that ought to be signaledized and controlled because of the conflict with Heights Road, as we all know, with Odana and Heights both being one-way streets. So all that signalization will be coordinated and the intersection improvements will be significant at Odana and M24, Lapier Road. So there'll be, left-hand turn movements will be permitted, which are currently not permitted, to go into the Jacobson Flores site at the light right now. There's no left-hand turn movements. But if left-hand turn movements allowed into the site, going southbound on M24 into the proposed east port development. And also, there'll be no direct traffic going to Odana. That still will remain one-way. There's no proposals or considerations to change that. So Heights will remain one-way going west. Odana will be one-way going east. But the signalization will be significantly improved with crosswalks on both the north and south side of that intersection. Can you show it, these stylus, please? So you could, you could see the cross. You can, you can see the crosshairs for the, for the crosswalks of that improvement, and then going across Odana to the Veterans Memorial that, and this is another reason why we're, we're funding an endowment for an improvement for the decision of the Board of Directors for the memorial and the best use of that. And that will match the, the endowment, same size, one thousand dollars per the number of residences that we have in our proposal, fifty-five thousand, and they could determine what the best use of that funds is. Is it signage? Is it just a maintenance endowment? Is it improvements? But that's up to the Board of Directors, the Veterans Tribute, Veterans Memorial.
Sure. In rush hour traffic, uh-
Jack, just make sure you're in your mic for me, please.
Sit up. So in rush hour traffic, if I'm going north on twenty-four, and now there's going to be people turning left going south on Lapeer-
Yep, yes.
And cars are stacked up.
Well, there'll be-
Is that left turn essentially going to be eliminated for Heights Road going north due to traffic?
Uh, that's, there's, there's, there's enough car stacking. You know, this is not a mega development by any means, it's a boutique market and fifty-five residences. And the, the peak hour, there always will be conflicts at peak hour.
Yeah.
Say that it'll be perfect, that would be a misnomer. It's not going to be. But there's significant length to have enough stacking for the left turn movement going northbound on M twenty-four onto Heights, and there's enough stacking, and there's a conflict, this is, there's the entire length of Broadway Street or M twenty-four where you have the left turn lane where you have both cars merging into that. But there'll be different striping, and that's taken in consideration in our traffic report. And Mr. Landis had made some notes that we need to make some technical corrections in that, and that's one of those things that will need to be corrected, including crosswalk over where Heights Road is, on M twenty-four. There's no light there, and so I believe M dot wants that crosswalk removed. They don't want people crossing where there's no light.
Yeah, and I would just add, Mr. Lovett, you know, one of the things when I walk this site, you know, there's multiple defined undefined curb cuts from essentially, you know, Odana north on this property, right? So right now, there's a lot of people coming and going because there still is some retail going on there, right? And I think that's the, the one thing, when I look at the kind of parallel plan, which we didn't initially have, it was kind of spoken to in our packet, is, you know, the density that we could have and a, you know, other commercial uses that could go here, right? I mean, I think the real traffic generators would be the, the retail building, and it sounds like it's going to be maybe kind of a, a market appeal or smaller vendors, a combination of versus a, a mass retailer or a drive-through or some of those other things that are going to be voluntarily given up. You know, by no means will there be additional traffic, you know, generated on the site than, you know, the limited use it has now, and especially in the undevelopment side, but, you know, I think that's where we're, I look at this kind of critically in the sense of, you know, what could it be, you know, is this a good answer, again, from the, the criteria that we're looking at here this evening? I think, you know, I, I would prefer to see this site as a PUD, right? Because I think if you didn't, it would be a, a very different chopped-up site. You could have a, you know, mega retailer in the front half and, like I said, multifamily and other components, you know, to, someone could have come to us and said, instead of kind of riding the, the township wave and carrying it to the north, could have done the inverse, which is what I was hired to do as an architect in the past, looking at the site, was take multifamily, higher-story buildings and pull it onto the southern portion. So, which again would be more traffic, you know, additionally. So, I'm not trying to speak kind of either way, but just in the sense of, I think the, the traffic generation here, it's an improvement to a, an, an okay operation, you know, and, and I think, I know we have concerns and, and have looked at concerns in the past, and, and obviously the dealership that remained a dealership was a big swing. We, we saw some pretty major developments that are there, so, you know, I, I tend to see this as a, as a move in the right direction versus a negative one, especially since, you know, development's probably inevitable either way. It might be kind of a little sticky here and there between the, the Heights and Odana, which has always been that case, right? People kind of going through that, and you know, you're well aware of that intersection, and I, I have a feeling, you know, by no means am I a traffic engineer, but the, the idea of southbound entering into maybe the retail center might be a little different, you know, timing than some of the northbound traffic or things, or, you know, it might only be at certain peak hours, which we look at from traffic, so.
The key thing with doing the site plan with the traffic engineers is to, we eliminated three curb cuts north of the one that we're proposing, and that's the Wild West. And, and also, the idea is what Mr. Reynolds said, you know, of the zoning permits drive-through. We're not, we're restricting drive-through. And that's something that's a restrictive covenant that goes with the development agreement that restricts those other uses that we had in there, including drive-through. We won't be coming back in crying wolf saying we need a drive-through. That's not the community center that we want. We want a walkable, very neighborhood-style center, Village, Village Market, you saw the renderings, and that kind of is, resonates the tradition of, of the Village of, of Lake Orion and at the, both the front door, the Village of Lake Orion and the front door of the township. So, we think this is a happy blend of both of that, and together with the variable and housing options, including live-work, and then the multi-generational with the front porches for both the elderly and the young, and as Mr. Gross said, designed for school buses, and that we have to say we failed to recognize, so we will have to put that into our plan when we see you next time, provided that there's a recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would like to turn it back to the Planning Commission for some of your thoughts on kind of the, the general framework of, of the proposal and, and kind of the technical senses. Planner went through, obviously, kind of the setbacks and some of the, what we would, you know, say in a, a normal sense of planning, you know, deviations, although this is a PUD, so that doesn't really exist, right? But it's the idea that we're, we're straying from maybe our standardized, you know, framework to, to gain some other benefit with the development. So, any other kind of components, things that we want to speak to this evening, potentially include if with further discussions, however we may choose to move forward with this project? I will say it was nice to see some of the clarification added to plan of, we don't know all of the units. I think moving forward, one of the things, you know, just for clarification, it, you know, the, our, our packet has a number of items, and we've seen this initially, so some of the, the concept elevations of cottage plans and things like that, I think would be helpful to include and make sure that's kind of clear-cut, you know, in the sense of, of what is going to be offered and where. Thank you for the, the cross-sections in our plan, that helps kind of us understand some of the buffers and things that relates to adjacent. One question that I do have for the development team is, some of your cross-sections are kind of referencing some fairly mature plantings, can you speak to that? And, and are you looking to kind of start those buffers off, you know, with mature plantings? Is that kind of unexpected within a couple of years? What is that thought process there? Or I guess some kind of the, the, the quality and, and sizing of some of your buffering? No, no, you're good. Yeah, I think it's just like in between those, like a cross-section where we're showing some taller trees and things and-
Oh, if, if I could just kind of speak in a, in a macro sense and, and you hit on the points yourself, and just to make sure that we're, we're all understanding what it is that we're proposing. And this, again, falls back to us wanting to integrate and, and have harmony with north and south of us. So the lots along the north border and the south border, we are self-restricting to a one-story type of design home. The two rows of residences in the center of the development will have what we call a cottage style, which will have a, a degree of a, a second floor to it, as you see here. So, if you were to look at a cross-section of the development, we have a ranch-type home abutting Converse Court, and then in the center, we have two-story massing, and then to the south, we are, we're back down to ranches. So, the, the trees do look large the way they're drawn, I have to admit, but it is really just one-story massing that we're looking at. So, I would say that on planting, we would probably be at- twelve to fourteen foot at initial planting.
Fairly mature plantings, I guess, is the-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity of, of unit type. I don't know if I just oversaw that or just wasn't clear to me, but that's a, I think a fairly big design move and, and compatibility to adjacent move is, is the restriction of kind of the ranch style on the north and the south side. You know, when I'm looking at this cross-section, which I think it was me that probably asked for it last go-around, so thank you, but, you know, as you can see, some of the massings of, of adjacent homes, because some of those homes on adjacent streets are not two-story homes. So, you know, we want to be conscious of, of how it relates to some of those, those massings. So, I think that helps with, furthermore, with the compatibility, you know, and just of what the development could be like, you know, as you mentioned and I've mentioned previously, it could be a three-story right up against some of that north line and potentially, you know, proposed on, on the rest of the township site for that matter. So, well, thank you for that clarity. Additional thoughts, comments? Also, consider putting a motion on the table and further deliberating if someone willing to make one?
Chairman-
Gross?
I would move that the Planning Commission, Commission forwards a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve PC twenty-five twenty-seven Eastport Village Land Unit Development Concept and Eligibility Plan located at five seventy-one South Lapeer Road, being parcels oh-nine eleven, four twenty-seven, double oh-four, double oh-six, double oh-seven, and I forty-five South Broadway Street, parcel oh-nine eleven, four twenty-seven, oh-sixteen, and oh-seventeen. Plans, date stamped and received July sixteenth. Recommendation to approve is based upon the following findings of fact. At the township ordinance did demonstrate, or the plan does demonstrate that the applicant did demonstrate that the plan meets the following criteria. With the split zoning of business and residential on the current zoning, a PUD makes an ideal candidate for planned unit development for the subject property. Number two, it encourages innovation and greater flexibility in land use planning and design, and provides for an expansion of the fifteen-minute neighborhood concept, which is identified in the Township Master Plan. Three, it provides enhanced, enhanced housing, employment, shopping, circulate, traffic circulation, and recreational opportunities for the people of the township and for the village. By downsizing the potential of the number of dwelling units that could be incorporated on the site under the current zoning. Number four, it encourages a less sprawling form of development by providing a single development of retail and residential as opposed to diversified and many different types of development on the property. Finally, it encourages the compatibility of design and use between the neighboring properties to the north and to the south.
All right, I have a motion, do I have support? Support. All right. Support by Mr. Lovett. One of the pieces, I think, that we need to speak to, right, is the overall zoning ordinance as it relates to not only criteria of PUD, but also PUD eligibility, correct? Recognizable benefit density in Township Master Plan. I mean, I know we hit on a couple of those, but any, anything-
I was thinking of a separate motion for that.
I think we're typically all in one recommendation. So, do we want to amend? I, I guess I would recommend we, we put it all in one for the sake of the Township Board.
Okay.
You know you love me, Mr. Gross.
Regarding the, the planned unit development eligibility as described in thirty-point-zero-three-B of the Township's zoning ordinance, the applicant has demonstrated that the plan meets the following criteria. By providing recognizable benefit, by providing a connection to the Paint Creek Trail, it includes a mixture of uses. Provides a financial assistance to adjoining subdivision for drainage improvements, and provides for a contribution to the Orion Veterans Memorial Development, which is directly across the street. Number two, the density impact is consistent with the underlying zoning, and number three is consistent with the Township Master Plan, looking for a fifteen-minute neighborhood concept. The economic impact is generated with the redevelopment of existing older properties on the subject property. There is a provision, number four, there's a provision for guaranteed open space by providing a master plan and homeowners association relative to maintaining the opening, open space. And there is a unified control, since this will be a single development with a master plan deed for the property. Recommendation would be subject to the following conditions at the Township Planner's Review letter of July the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Be incorporated or resolved. Any unresolved issues with the Township Engineers' Review of July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five be incorporated in a final plan. That the Fire Department Report of July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five regarding the development of the units be incorporated in the final plan. And the final plan shall incorporate comments made this evening, such as, not inclusive, but including the incorporation of a school bus pickup location in the final plan, that the parking for units forty-nine through fifty-five be shown on the plan, and that the parallel parking on the Entrance Drive, which is the only access to the development, be removed, and I respectfully disagree with the applicant that, you know, that those are good unit, good parking spaces. I think that they're, they're looking for problems by, by having them there. And other comments that were generated by the Planning Commission this evening, such as the resolution to the traffic signal at the major entrance.
All right, I've amended a motion on the table to recommend approval of the Board of Trustees, as motion maker outlined a number of items. Do I have amended support by Mr. Lovett?
Amended support.
Okay, thank you for those additional components. I know that's a, a long-winded component, but there's obviously many layers to the PUD process, and also, as us, as knowing that it's multi-step and expecting improvements along the way with the, the proposal. So a couple of things outlined, just to clarify for everyone here, is obviously the addition of our planner review comments, including the Fire Marshal's review. One point of removing the, the parking out front is, is another one. I know the applicant looked at relocating, or mentioned that they would take a look at relocating, and then the, the clarification that the improvements at the track, traffic signal is part of the development. I'll just make a quick note on the, the removal of the parking. I personally, I, I agree with maybe the, the knee-jerk that it's not an appropriate location or, or that it wouldn't be. I think hearing some of the thought process and the improvements we've seen from the first iteration of where we are now, it is better. I know if, if we're going towards kind of this- I know if we're going towards kind of this downtown component, you know, that it's not uncommon to see parallel parking on those drives. So, I'm in support of the condition. I also would be, if there wasn't a tasteful resolution or a more negative trade-off of those spaces, because I've looked at a few spots of, do we give up open space? Do we trade off on those things? And I guess I'm maybe looking to have a small discussion here with the motion on the table is parking over, you know, are there other things we would not want to give up, you know, if it meant those parking spaces, or just get rid of them, or be at a potential parking deficit? I mean, maybe that's getting into the weeds, but I could see it remaining and still being successful. So, I just want to have a quick discussion on that. No disrespect to your thoughts, I support it, but I'd also don't want to create other issues and the snowball effect, so.
I agree with that.
Mr. Lovett?
Yep, I agree with that. I don't think the parallel parking is the end of the world, and from what I understand is the resident parking is underneath, same level as the street, but it's underneath the residence. Is that correct?
That's correct. By the way, just, just received a comment from M.DOT late this afternoon. I didn't see it just now. So, I think the good compromise is eliminate two additional spots, both on the north and south side, the parallel parking. I believe that we have vast experience in live-work communities in the whole downtown field, but if we, as a mitigating factor, if there's some consideration to maybe amend Mr. Gross's motion, or if he wants to stay steadfast, I accept that. But I would right now agree to eliminate the two parallel parking spaces, the most westerly, two spaces, both north and south side of the entry road. I think that's a significant compromise and reduces that conflict. And there we have now room for the bus. Or I think the bus would actually go on the east side of that intersection where we have that open space, the most appropriate spot. Don't want the children crossing the street. So, I just, I don't want to muddy the waters, but we just got this report from M.DOT, and they had the same concern as you did, Mr. Gross. And so, they asked that we mitigate that, but I think that's a healthy compromise, and I would please if you would consider it. If not, we'll come back and discuss it at the appropriate time in the final plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I will make one thought just across, since there's some mixed opinions. Obviously, this concept eligibility, the idea, the framework, to me, I think I would like to empower you guys as a team to kind of take the comments and take a look at what you want to do. I do appreciate kind of the working, you know, order that you're presenting here this evening, but, you know, really thinking through how many spaces it needs to be, and also just the potential traffic conflict that's there. So, I can see the benefit going both ways. You know, I would like to, I guess I'm just open to it, some iteration or version of it being present somehow on the site, you know, I don't know, but I wanted to understand if we're willing, for example, the open space west of unit 28, you know, are we willing to potentially compromise an open space, you know, if spaces were to shuffle somewhere else? So, just as a, as a point within the motion of understanding, you know, some direction.
It's a concept plan.
Yep, agreed. And that's what I'm saying, let's, it's not, it's a detail, but, you know, we're all feeling the same idea, so.
Can I change the motion?
Understood? No worries. Tammy, go ahead.
Along that same line, I was looking for clarification. Within his motion, he did keep repeating with the final plan, with the final plan. So, is there any of the conditions as the motion currently sets that would involve any modification to this concept plan? Or is everything things, if the concept plan is approved by the Board of Trustees, you're saying what you'd like to see incorporated into the final plan when they return? So, just looking for that clarification.
Motion maker? Yeah. The intent is that it would all be resolved within the final submittal?
And there's nothing within the motion that would have to be modified on this concept plan? Making sure. Not even fire? I mean, because that got into the size of the building, so?
Well, fire is just limitations for what the building, I don't think there's clarification on height on the plans. It was more or less a clarity that it would not exceed, and obviously, fire hydrants being relocated according to.
Yeah, my height was the main, okay, so nothing, nothing on this?
Recommend if I'm wrong by the applicant, but I don't believe the building as it's proposed right now is over 30 feet, correct?
I think it's like 30 foot, 10 inches, and we're certainly able to.
You probably know a good architect that can figure that out, so.
Make that adjustment, yeah.
All right, perfect. Maybe midpoint of the roof. All right, further discussion, discussion points, anything else on the motion on the table? Okay, now is the time where public comment, including that of the applicant, if the applicant, if you want to do me a favor and just step aside, so we have the opportunity for any public that's here that's looking to make public comment on the motion on the table. Again, this is a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a number of findings of fact in the sense of the PUD eligibility, and then also conditions upon the approval, which are essentially granting the comments provided by our consultants the, to be corrected. So, go ahead, if you want to state your name and address for the record, please. The floor is yours.
My name's Chris Gilbert. I live at 196 Glenworth. First of all, I want to say that I commend him on his changes that he had made, especially the, not putting the drive-through on Glenworth and putting in pickleball courts, and I think that's advantageous. Also, his commitment to trying to preserve some of the trees. I know it's going to be difficult, but if there's some, there's some beautiful 70-foot poplars, 60-foot maple trees, 60-foot oak trees are on that property. I know that would actually enhance that community a little bit by helping to try to maintain some of those trees as well. The only concern I have really is about the retention pond, because if you walk down the Paint Creek Trail, there is a retention pond directly north of that pond. You have a, one retention pond, and then you're going to have this retention pond, and then you're going to have another retention pond right across from that retention pond. So, if you're walking down the Paint Creek Trail, you will go from one retention pond to another retention pond to another retention pond. I know because of the, 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 if you take a look at it, I'm sure aesthetically, I don't know, you can put it, you can't put the retention pond any other place, because that's, that's the low point there. So, from a water runoff type of thing, that's the only place you can really put that pond there, because it is the low point there. And from there, it does have a little creek that does go off into the Paint Creek as well there, too, that runs off. So, we have to take, kind of take a careful look at that, because there is, there is a culvert that goes underneath the Paint Creek Trail that transports water from the runoff from that particular piece of property that goes, flows directly into the protected drop stream of Paint Creek. So, the retention pond, we need to probably take a very careful look at that as you're planning, and looking at your planning and engineering of that particular site there, too. But I think Mr. Mosheri has done a good job in terms of making some of the changes that we were looking for on our side of the community as well, too.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. We'll just add a couple of points of clarification that's in our packet, and if you can't read it from the back of the room, that the detention pond is provided with a fountain, and there is landscaping around it. I believe at our first meeting, there was the image of your Rochester development, I believe, that showed essentially a similar detention pond of more of a landscape feature was shown, and is the understanding in our packet, so. Additional public comment on the motion?
Hi, Heather Dixon, 682 Pleasant Ridge. I would also like to commend.
Do me a favor, and will you pull the mic down just a little bit for me? Thank you.
So, I would also like to commend the applicant for some of the changes they've made, particularly the removal of the access onto Glenworth, that I think the whole John Winters sub will appreciate that, and also some of the additional features that have been added. One of the concerns I still have is about the density, and I know there's been a lot of conversation here about, well, it could be worse. Well, everything could always be worse, but I want to strive for what's the best. And the applicant had made references to two other developments in Orion Township, the Orion Woods condos and the cottages at Bald Mountain, that the spacing there is similar with 10 feet between houses. But what I did notice is that both of those developments, the lot sizes are actually larger. They come in around 55 feet versus this being 46 feet as shown for at least the standard rectangular lots. There's some variances, because those have more curvy roads in those developments. So, I would like to see a little bit more done, at least on the houses that are adjacent to Glenworth, to make that more representative of the John Winters sub, which those are average of 60 feet width, or at least the minimum of 55 feet, which is what we tend to see within other developments in the township. And this is a reduction of about two houses along Glenworth. And two houses might not seem like a lot, but for me, it's more of a numbers game and a precedent with, we approved 46 feet here, what's stopping that from going in elsewhere in the township? What's stopping that from being the new standard? That is my only comment for that. And then I'd also like to say that I appreciate the contribution towards the drainage study in John Winters. I'd like to learn some more about that as one of the houses that deals with a significant portion of the flooding. It's been an ongoing thing for me for 13 years since I bought that house, with conversations with the road commission and the township, and I would just really like to understand more of what the plan is there, what the drainage study, and I know that's outside of the scope of this meeting, but with that said, I do also agree that a PUD is probably the best fit for this property. I'm not opposed to the PUD. I would just like to see some additional things done.
Thank you for your comments. Additional public comments on the motion? Any other, go ahead, Tammy.
There were some that were received in the mail.
Yep, I did note that earlier in our, in our packet, that we did receive a couple after the public hearing portion. Dennis Steele and Carol Dooley are both submitted letters that were opposed in our, in our record this evening. Additional public comment. All right, roll call vote for the Planning Commission. Again, this is a motion for a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve PC 25-27 Eastport Plan Unit Development Concept and Eligibility Plan. There's a number of findings of fact for meeting, demonstrating the ability to meet the criteria of our PUD, and then also the general criteria for it and the conditions upon the motion, as I've previously stated. A roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Lovett?
Yes.
Cummings?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. If anyone's looking to exit, just do so quietly. We still have a couple of things on the agenda this evening, and we do appreciate your attendance and support as projects work their way through the process. Additionally, we have item 8B on our agenda this evening, which is the discussion on text amendments, our favorite topic as it relates to our future upcoming public hearing for some Township initiated text amendments. Tammy, go ahead.
Yep, I just want to run through it briefly. You will, at your next meeting, have the public hearing, and I wanted you to be able to see it ahead of time and understand where I was going with this. So, I will be, as you had requested previously, anytime there's a text amendment, you want a hard copy, so you all have it. I will be going through the pages rapidly. Some of it is repetitious. So, starting with the first sheet, which would be section 6.04, which is Article Six. Looking, I'm doing clarification on, we have an asterisk talking about minimum lot size, but that doesn't jive with the minimum requirements of the Health Department. So, I'm saying, you know, that we're going to be looking at what the Health Department regulations are if they're a larger. Article Seven, we had in there dependent housing, but it was not defined anywhere within our ordinance, and we already have everything that's required for the Zoning Enabling Act, so we're just removing that, because it, we don't have it defined, and we think we have everything within our ordinance that are the different types of housing that are required. Renumbering the footnotes based on that, removing the footnotes for the dependent housing. On the last page, which is 710, within multifamily, it's talking about parking setbacks, and it's saying that, I realized that we didn't have a distance that multifamily had to be from the road, besides this saying that you had to be 20 feet, but it went on to say where it contains windows and doors. You would assume there's always windows and doors, but we shouldn't assume. What is the distance we want these buildings to be from the road? Whether there's windows or doors or not, they should be the 20. So, I'm striking the windows and doors. Stop me if anybody has any questions. Article Nine, we're adding a footnote K to automotive dealerships. And if you read my footnote, this is real, related to, we've had this a couple times recently, where you have car inventory, and the question of, does that go into the car parking calculation? Does it have to have landscape in the middle? Does it have to have the same standard parking spot width? And so, it's just saying that the Planning Commission has the discretion to set those versus having to go to the zoning board of appeals. Next page, nine dash eight, it's talking about the required setback for parking can be reduced or waived by the Planning Commission, and it says, when parking abuts commercial office or industrial. So, I'm, give justification that it's planned to have landscaping, but that the Planning Commission can reduce it when it abuts commercial in office if provided evidence that the proposed landscaping. So, it's just, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you look at the very last line that was struck in there, it said that you, Planning Commission could give a waiver when existing or off-street parking drives or structures are located within the setback area. That was always very foggy, what that was even saying. So, I'm striking that saying that the Planning Commission shall have the discretion to waive the setback for parking, because that area is intended to have landscape, and if it's narrower, and they still have the ability to put in landscape and meet the intent, just allowing the Planning Commission to give that waiver. Same thing below, it's talking about striking where existing streets or driveways are parked. It doesn't make sense that that was there. The last page, nine point oh four, there was discussion between the building official and the Fire Marshal and myself, and they weren't really sure what this clear minimum space round structures was meant to be. It didn't coincide with any code, so they asked that it be struck in actual measurement and say it just needs to be per building in international fire codes. They look at the plans when they come through, and if they had a problem with the distance, they'll say something, but if not, it's not a number that we came up with, that neither one of them knew why it was what it was. So, fixing that.
Tammy, real quick on that page, can we get clarification from them that we don't want to add whatever is most restrictive, just the and/or gives the opportunity for?
Okay, I'll check on the and/or.
For option, and I'm not necessarily priming the ability to say most restrictive is the right answer, because that could mean a much larger number, but, you know, there's, there's numbers in the fire code of, in a perfect world, right? And then we live in reality that that doesn't.
I will check with him on the and/or, thank you. Restricted business, this is going to be repetitious. It's the same thing, striking the where existing parking, striking the where existing parking. And the last page, the and/or that we're going to have discussed. General business, we added the footnote in here for dealerships, the one that we've already seen. We found we had, the last text amendment had add places of worship and forgot to strike churches, because places of worship covers it. So, this is just striking that. Also, getting into car inventory, same language, same language on waivers on setbacks, same language on the and/or. 16 dash one, same thing on the auto dealerships. Just clarifying the language on the second page, we already say above it restaurants, no drive-through or carryout, then the one below said restaurants, including drive-throughs. Well, we, I've already talked about it. The wording just didn't work, so I'm just clarifying the wording. Again, adding the car inventory language, same language on the landscape and the parking, and same language on the and/or. Article 18, there's a typo that's being fixed. What we found is, if you're looking at B, 1803B, we talk about minimal, on the minimum parcel size for an industrial park, and we defined within here that you can have industrial park or industrial parcel, and we didn't say what the minimum area was for an industrial parcel, so I was adding that. Took care of the parking setbacks, took care of landscaping, took care of the and/or clause. 1903, (inaudible) intended to contain landscaping. Same language, we're clarifying it. It wasn't clear in IC. Same language struck on the existing. Again, the and/or language. Article 20, the, it's the same thing with the landscaping, and we've seen all the other districts, the and/or, same thing. Special Purpose One, same thing on the setbacks. Special Purpose One, same thing on the setbacks. Existing parking, same thing, and/or, same language. SP two, same thing with the setbacks, same thing with the drives, same thing with the and/or. Recreation one, same thing with the landscaping. And actually, I don't think on this, we didn't have anything allowing the, the waiver. So I added this language as, why would this district not be allowing it? So I added the same language we're proposing. The and/or, recreation two, didn't allow the waiver. So again, allowing that in this district, the same and/or language. Schedule of Regulations also has the minimum parcel size, so adding about the health department. Okay, general provisions, this one's a little bit more complicated. It's probably been two years ago, we started getting comments and questions on, you know, the nature of, of Orient Township used to be the little cottage community. And we have a lot of very, very small lake lots. And so although our current ordinance says that accessory structures you cannot have unless you have a principal structure, there was an interest in if I own a lake lot and I happen to have the ability to purchase a lot across the road that is a small lot, that I be granted the ability to make a detached accessory structure without a home. And there's restrictions in here. It's got to look like the home, it's got to have landscape, it can't be rented out, it can't be outdoor storage. But it does give the ability, and we do give our justification here, it's an old lake, a lake cottage community. And so allowing, if you own a lake lot and you did restrict them, that they have to sell together. And this lot is under eighty-four hundred square feet, so it's under our normal minimum lot size that you be afforded the opportunity to make a detached structure without a home. So that's all that language. I am proposing, it's not showing on here, if you're looking at twenty-seven twelve, I was not able to come up with the language in time. But I'm hoping to add one more criteria in that chart, number eight. ZBA is seeing a number of detached accessories, which the size of it is dictated based on the acreage. I'm hoping to add, just add one more category. We have over two point five, and I was hoping over two point five up to five, and add one more category in there. But I did not come up with. Pardon me?
That would be a good.
Yes, I just haven't come up with that language, and I will by the time you see it next week. Page twenty-seven fifteen. If, if there's a temporary structure that's for a neighborhood, a trailer for sales for a new neighborhood going in, it was saying it had to go to the ZBA. And it just, it didn't make sense to me that it goes to ZBA. I think the building official, he's the one out there during construction and, and having him review or his designee per actual requirements that require, that are in our ordinance to allow them to allow that temporary sales trailer versus making it go to the zoning board of appeals. We had somebody that actually, because of the color of their business, I'm on page twenty-seven twenty-four, wanted to make the striping for their parking spots the color that resembled their business. And I just, I don't think we have anywhere that we don't have, you're white with the blue for handicapped. And so I'm proposing the coloring of parking stripes shall be white. And for the accessible parking, missing a G, parking shall be striped blue.
Do we care if the striping is white or yellow? This isn't a pretty typical that you see either one of those colors? I'm just saying a traditional coloring, right? I mean, if we're going to say something, I.
Is it yellow for handicap?
Yeah, I thought it was. Blue is, is for handicap.
Blue is handicap. I mean, I'm just saying I'm in property, real estate development, not properties that are yellow, and I have properties that are white.
So white or yellow and blue or orange, is that the two? Isn't what you said the orange?
Well, it's usually like, I'm saying like white or yellow for primary striping, blue for handicap.
Right.
So I'm just saying in the sense of, we're only saying white, do we care if there's yellow?
We can put white or yellow unless somebody's got a problem with that.
In yellow, yeah, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen orange, but.
And we could say and/or as approved by PC.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not, I think the point is we're trying to have some consistency. I mean, I think you can, I'm not going to check the shade of DuPont yellow you're going to use, but the sense of that we're not getting green parking stripes, right?
I mean, this was a very bold color that, that they were, they were asking about.
I think I'm fine with saying white or, or yellow, right? I mean, you would call center lines in a road yellow, right?
Yeah, that's true.
I would just.
White or yellow? Got it.
They can go to the board if they want orange.
That would be a hundred percent.
Okay, the next one, I'm on page twenty-seven thirty-four. We've run into where, you know, we require the landscape islands in, in certain situations in a parking lot, and we give the exact dimensions. In some cases, the, and we dictate the number of them they need. In some cases, the developer wants more than that. And then it's, it's, do we really have the right, if they're giving more than we require, to dictate the size and that it have plantings? So I believe I said in here that it can be accepted by the planning commission that it's demonstrated the size does not present a vehicular safety issue conflict in the size that landscaping will survive. So not holding them to our very stringent criteria if they're voluntarily giving us more islands than required. The next page, twenty-seven forty-nine, you know, canceling out, you know, saying where the building official is the one that can have the, again, the temporary sales office. And, and each time says zoning board of appeals, changing it to the building official. On page twenty-seven fifty-one, we've run into before where it says the light, the height of the light pole is the lesser of twenty feet or the building. And just in some cases, if you have a single-story building, to ask them that their light poles not be taller than that, I'm proposing that they can exceed that. Pedestrian access on twenty-seven seventy-three, we recently hit a situation where, yes, we want that pedestrian access from the safety path to the establishment, but based on the extreme grades on the site, there was literally no place to put it. So we were just giving this in an extreme situation if it's not doable. And the township engineer verifies it, that it would not be required.
Tammy, real quick before we move on from general provisions, did we ever pick up the, the waivable location for a dumpster?
Dumpster, I think, said can be at the discretion of the planning commission. That we want it in the rear, however, based on how far it is from the road and things like that, that there is the ability for.
Ran into a few technical senses where it's in a side yard, you know, like this property is a prime example of that where it isn't, but it could easily be viewed as side yard.
Yes.
But it makes sense where it's at.
Yes, we did incorporate that. Going back to, this was a late development here, that's why it's separate. John and I and Sally, it might not seem like it, because it's been many months, are working on this tree preservation section. It is a real bugger, a real bugger to come up with what to do. And I locked myself in my office, and John and I spent some time talking about it today. We're getting, we're getting close. We're not quite there. I don't think we can have it part of this. But I do have one thing that I wanted to incorporate within this text amendment. And that is, if we look at the first page, which is twenty-seven fifty-one, and truly what our declaration and our purpose of the Tree and Woodlands Protection Section, you're not supposed to be able to, without development, go out there and clear. And I found this exception on page twenty-seven fifty-four, which is saying if I'm a parcel less than five acres, that I can go out, and I'm exempt from all this. But nowhere in there does it say, I've got at least be intending to develop. So as written, if I'm five acres or less, there is nothing to stop me from going out there and clear cutting. So my proposal is, the last page, to have exactly as it's written right now, but then go on to say, however, the parcel must be proposed for residential development and have a building application for a home or accessory structures. So this is not the be-all, end-all. I think we need further discussions on, even with that, a five acre saying, even if I got a building permit, you're not going to look at all what I'm taking out in five acres. But that's a further discussion. I'm looking for a temporary where I think we're sitting exposed. Now, there is, this is, there's another section that we have that would stop somebody from getting rid of the landmark trees. Even in spite of this, they couldn't go out and do landmark. But it's still, I think we're sitting really exposed that somebody without a building permit could come in and get rid of the protected, not the landmark, but the protected. So with this statement, it's saying, I'm not exempt from everything, all these pages, if I'm five acres or less, and I'm, and I don't have a building permit.
Is it residential only though, or are we looking at commercial and residential?
This, right now, does not say residential only. So.
Shouldn't it, I guess I'm saying, shouldn't it be a blanket statement for just?
For any?
You know, proposed building structure, you know, take it back out one definition and say structures or something along those.
I think, I think what protects us is that you have site plan. And they're coming to you with site plan, and I think there's some stops you could do. We're here, it's just, there's no, there's no committee, there's nobody you go to. But I could change this, however, the parcel must be proposed for development and have a building application for development in order to be under that five acres or less.
I think it's currently written, there's the ability to kind of circumvent with the, like, the tree permit component, right? And I think we all know a few parcels that have been cleared but not developed or approved to develop, right? Or we had clearing very early on. So I know that's a component of the new ordinance to be written, so maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but.
We, we definitely will be having discussion and, and taking this little temporary fix and compounding on it. And I've, I have rewritten this whole thing. And then I put it in ChatGPT to see, to see what they came up with. But in the interim, since I'm doing some tax amendments and I seem to see this concept come across my desk, I thought it was a quick clarification that could be put in.
I'm, I'm good with that. I would have the, support the broader stroke. Any reservations with that?
I just have one question.
Yep.
What if we do like two acres or more? So if you buy a one acre lot?
That whole thing, when John and I talked about it earlier, we just said, we will be coming to talk about that as a whole and what that size is. But instead of rocking the whole boat, just putting this one thing in here for right now.
Forthcoming, we've talked about some instances and a few scenarios of, are you commercial, are you residential? Right? If you're commercial, it's kind of step one, step two. You know, if, if you weren't to do anything, we got to have the understanding of what you're going to do, right? If you're residential, you bought a lot, you might kind of clear some trees out or whatever, you have some parameters to do so. Specifically, I think, you know, we're exploring the idea of not having to have a whole tree survey and things, but it was at a reasonable rate of removal, right? Not, not something crazy. So that's being developed furthermore to kind of poke, you know, we're, we're poking at this and I think we're just trying to bundle it and push it through while we got something versus every scenario which is not well addressed as it's written.
Correct.
But this is better than we used to be.
If we change it to what we're proposing here, when we, when we get to the other, we can completely change this again. It's just tidying it up in the meantime. And any of the planning commission members that have any interest, I don't know, you know, that we get into a subcommittee. But it is, it is harder than you think. And, and we could be here for hours, and as you see, you struggle, me trying to convey to you, you know, what my concerns were and how I came up with this. And I really think, you know, John and I have met, and, and if there's a third or fourth, you know, as long as we don't have a quorum, that anybody wants to volunteer to eyeball it and say, why are we doing this? Or what about this other idea versus sitting right here? Then we can come up with something else that's more than just John and my eyes before we come back. So any interest, feel free to step forward.
I got nothing else to do. It's time to go.
Come on, Jack.
Love it, love it.
I would just say, as a whole, as a whole, it's, you, you have a good framework. I've obviously, you know, have had some discussions, surprise, surprise, on where we're at with it. So I just would encourage everyone, when we do get it, you know, that maybe we get it in a draft format, and everyone, please dig into it because what I would like to do is get it implemented, right? I don't want to have it be a, a, a six-month discussion. We've spent a lot of time on the front end of this to kind of tee it up for success. So if you don't have the time to get into a subcommittee, do your homework, you know, if you're going to read one thing in your packet.
And I literally, we originally.
Read the, the tree ordinance of the zoning ordinance.
Well, what I would suggest, anybody that's interested, Jack, read what it is right now. Good luck. We have the way that we've interpreted it for years, but good luck. It has been mishmash put together, it's a mess, it, it doesn't make sense, it's horrible. So I had started with red lines, and finally threw the existing and said, what do we want? I tried to keep some of the framework on how it's written, but if it was garbage or it didn't make sense, and it was just words to have words, I just threw it out. So just to understand where we were and then say, is this what we want? If, if we're preserving trees in the township, doesn't make sense as it's written. What we were going, we're going to require them to do for the different categories of whether I'm a single-family homeowner or, or I'm, I'm a non-residential development.
Development area is a key definition in that one to take a look at. There's some great flexibility in how that can be interpreted and what that would mean to a tree impact of a development. Not necessarily landmark trees, because that's another component. But we've, we've, I wouldn't say lucky, right? But there's been some tasteful interpretation by development, right? Versus some things that could easily be saying, well, it's all development area, right? We're changing it all, right?
Well, and that's a very good educational for Mr. Lovett, being semi-new. One of the golden rules of, of planning is go to your definitions. Don't go what you assume it is when you're saying, well, what do you mean by development? Always read your, your, in reference back to your definitions because that gives you the core of what you're talking about when you wrote it. Okay, to wrap this up real quick, we're in thirty dash four. I had requests from consultants and staff that instead of taking applications in three weeks before a meeting, we're now going to push people to four to give some additional time for reviews. We are like aging our consultants with our quick turnaround. Thirty-four dash two, again.
No offense, John.
I'm twenty-five years old.
Thirty-four dash two, again, we had some mix-ups on rest, with the drive-throughs, without drive-throughs. It's not changing any uses, it's just clarifying the language and some inconsistencies. Last but not least, thirty-five dash one, this one's got some history to it, I took a lot of time researching. When we created a LaPierre overlay district, we came up with uses we thought should be allowed in the overlay district. Those uses were added to each district with a footnote. If I'm a LaPierre overlay, I can have this, I can have this. If I'm, if I'm a GB, I can have this, I can have this, if I'm RB. But there was this big discussion of a current PUD that's at the corner of LaPierre and Dutton. The Culvers, right there. And actually, when I started or was moved into this position, they erroneously thought that there was a PUD to the east of Culvers, that big vacant that we've talked about before. They thought that made it all the way through a PUD and was approved as a PUD. So they were saying, that land, what are we going to want to see there? Where, what are we going to allow there because it's already a PUD? And that's where this thirty-five point oh three came from. They were saying for that particular piece, what uses would we want to see? Which kind of doesn't follow our ordinance, you would come in for a PUD modification. That's the only reason this thirty-five point oh three was added, was the intent of what uses they'd want to see on that piece of land. So I'm suggesting completely wiping that out. They'd come in for, it's not even zone PUD, so it wouldn't even be a PUD modification. That PUD, it broke out to be only the small one that's approved, and that vacant land is not part of the PUD. And it, it just doesn't make any sense to me to be part of this ordinance. So I'm proposing to, to waive it. Site grade, that's the connection of the path, landscape greenbelt, that's it. So now when you have a public hearing next time, you understand what is, I won't have to go through it again because you've heard it. And if you have any feelings between now and then, let me know. I will be forwarding this tomorrow morning to the attorney to get her feelings for it before the public hearing.
One really minor detail point.
Okay.
Page sixteen two.
Let me get to sixteen. Sixteen two, got it.
This is the only, the only spot where we spell it, drive-through.
Oh, yep, got it.
That's all I got for now.
I like it.
Give her a break. Well, we found your next committee member, that's the, that's the good news.
And just so you know, as an update also, because I got the microphone, once you get it to me, it'll shut up.
Yeah, and you did say on record that you weren't going to speak the next time, so we'll give it to you now.
I also locked myself in my office to work on the PUD section. And if that's another one, sit down and read how it currently is. And if you can tell me what all of that means, there was definitely, things were added, and they were added kind of in a weird spot. So that, I've just ripped it apart, gotten rid of a lot of stuff that I don't know why it was there. And it'll be another one when I bring it to you that even though you know what it used to say, you literally just need to say, is this what we wanted to say? Who cares where we were at? Who cares what were the requirements? We couldn't figure out why they were there, just leave the past behind. And is this what? We couldn't figure out why they were there, just leave the past behind, and is this what we want it to say now? So that's close to.
Sounds good.
Did I say, John did help me with that also, and I think we ran it past Mark too, I don't know, I'll give you some credit, Mark.
Kudos to both of you.
Thank you.
Any other concluding comments on text amendment discussions? I know it's one of our favorite topics.
If you look at the intent, that's the very first page on this, the papers you were given, look at our intent, and the intent is to not allow clear cutting. But, but then, but then, that five acre thing allows somebody, five acres or lower, as it's worded right now, even though our intent is not to allow it, it says you're exempt from all this, you can do what you want.
Well, that needs to be fixed.
That needs to be fixed.
It is, it is a discussion, the framework, the new framework coming forth is definitely of that, you know, reinforcing that component, right? We, we don't want to just see mindless removal of trees, let alone clear cutting, right? And we don't want to see the leveling of land without a proposal there, right, to just kind of prep the land for whatever it is, just from that. So we've had a couple of maybe historical lessons learned, right? That, and I think also with our mindset of the master plan, that trees are important, we want it, that's a lot of the framework that's here, we're toughening up those parameters and saying, okay, your development area is X, but let's be reasonable, that's, you know, your building needs to be X, not the whole site, right? So that's, I think, where, you know, we're pulling that in, so. All right, all right, any public comments? See no one left in the room, I take that as a no, communications. We have non-planner report and education on our, in our spot this evening, Tammy and staff printed out the MTA professional development retreats packet that is out now officially, so October twenty-ninth through thirtieth is the planner's retreat. I am, I gotta commit fully, but I'm planning on trying to make that work in my schedule, so anyone who's looking to do so, I guess, reach out to Tammy as soon as possible. We'll have a deadline coming up here, the biggest thing is more or less getting blocks of rooms and getting everything booked up. I think.
I did verify that the first day registration starts at eight, first class at eight-thirty, which is, I mapped it, it's like an hour drive, so it would be a drive up in the morning, but then they do have team building in the evening, so I'm fairly certain I can get approval for the overnight stay, but you would be going up in the morning because it's within that hour trip in the morning.
Okay, understood.
But you, but be allowed the overnight stay.
All right, so circle back.
Please let me know, please let me know. I do need to point out that this is the end of October, and MAPS conference, which is always an option for you all, so is mid-October, so, you know, doing both might be difficult, but did, Mr. Enos, is that not true that the National Planners Conference, which has not been, been in Detroit in years?
Yes, that'll be this, that'll be this winter, the APA, American Planning Association, will be in the city of Detroit, which it hasn't been for.
Like the seventies or eighties, it's been a very long time.
Longer than I've been doing this.
So that will be probably a very large event.
Huge, and, and cool, too, I mean, it'll be, it's a national planning conference, so they're Detroit, and then the local organization's taking a lot of time and effort to make this very important and special for our community.
So, you know, as I'm planning mine, I'm thinking this retreat is a good one for this year, and then that one would be next year technically, and so it's the ability to hit, because, because the retreat's put on by MTA, Michigan Township Association, and the others, a planner's conference, and so you kind of get a different flavor from both, and instead of trying to fit both in one month, which can be extreme on our budget, but we do budget for the training once a year, so perhaps if we have enough interested in the retreat, we do the retreat this year, and then, you know, keep in mind the spring or whatever time it is next year, that is the national one.
Understood. All right, so get to Tammy ASAP. Sounds like a plan. All right, committee reports, we have none, as our discussion was lengthy this evening with our township initiated text amendments and all the sections that we went through here this evening, we do have a public hearing at seven oh five at our next meeting on the twentieth for township initiated text amendments for the advertised articles, I won't go through every single one. This evening, I have no comments, Mr. Cummins, do you have any comments?
You're not.
Mr. Lovett?
Nope.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Mr. Walker? All right, I have eight fifty-five, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, supported.
Do I have all those in favor? Please stay with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.